And we are live.
Okay, it's 6:02 and we will open this historic review board work session on April 23rd. It's the day that Blazers win the series.
Yes.
What time does the game start?
7:30.
Okay, so you're in, you guys.
We're all gonna be talking tonight, saying work getting done at 7:30.
No eating, no nothing.
Well, we do, I do have food. Um, so as far as uh the work session goes, hmm, sorry, I'm wondering why we're not showing on the screen. Um, if we can, there we are. We can end um the work session around 6:40 or 6:45 um if possible and then there's time to eat uh before the regular meeting starts at 7:00.
So you look like you're preparing to go through the report on the survey?
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Okay, I'm happy to let you.
Great, uh so we did receive one additional comment um over email two days ago, um so I will just pass that out. You take one and pass. Um and, did you do that too? Uh and I'll try to include this um email comment in as we go through each item so that you don't have to kind of read it, remember it. Uh, okay, so we've been doing the HRP, HRP policy updates for quite a while now and um we are finished, um mostly finished with, you know, gathering input from the community, of course, we always are open to more. But we uh held an open house, we visited McLaughlin neighborhood, Kenema neighborhood. Um, we advertised in Trail News on social media, on the city website. Uh, and after the open house, we also posted a survey with questions online. Uh, so we had twenty to uh twenty-five to thirty people at the open house and then we got twenty online responses to the survey. Our twenty total responses to the survey, people from the open house and then uh people online. Uh, and then um we also had the boards of um posters at the meetings and posted at the library uh for about a month. And um we have little stickers on those and so we got input that way. I think, you know, we, there are five hundred and sixty-eight historic properties in Oregon City. Um, we sent a postcard out to all of those to advertise the open house. Um, and you know, we didn't hear from a whole lot of people and I'm guessing that means we're mostly uh, people mostly agree with the policies and don't have a big issue with them, otherwise we would have heard from them. So um I think that's one takeaway from this process. And then uh I'm gonna go through each of the topic areas, summarize what we heard uh from the community and from the board as well, because we had held several work sessions on this topic. And uh and then I'm going to also include my staff recommendation for each of those topics. And my recommendation is based on uh the public input that we received, the input from the board and then also guidance from Secretary of Interior uh and then other jurisdictions as well. After, what I'm hoping to get from you uh at this work session is some general head nods and uh direction from you so that I can take this and go back and actually write the, the language of the policy um and sort of bring to the next meeting the actual new policy that you can vote on. Uh, and I would write it based on, you know, what we agreed to tonight. Um, so really, the only thing that we left to do is wordsmithing um if, if needed uh at the, at the next meeting. Um, this does go, then we, we, we get input from Planning Commission and City Commission. It's not an ordinance or legislative uh action, but um our code in chapter seventeen forty requires that we update the policies that we get, um that the Planning Commission and City Commission also review it. Um, so that would happen in June and July before it actually gets adopted. So if they have, uh if there are any issues that come up during those reviews, then they might send it back down to us to rework something. Okay, so fiber cement uh siding law, first I'll let you look at this nice picture of our open house, yay. Uh, and then we'll get into the first topic, fiber cement siding. Um, what we heard from folks about half, people said, yeah, let it happen, any, in any case. Um, I support fiber cement um on historic properties. About forty percent said, well, only in some cases, maybe not on the front of a building or maybe not on the historic structure, but on the back or on an accessory building. Uh, and then two people or twelve percent said, never, in any case, allow fiber cement siding. Um, the comment, the additional comments that we received uh got a little bit into some details about um the thickness of the siding and the, the design of beaded lap or Dutch lap. Um, so we could decide to get more detailed. But my recommendation uh is to allow smooth only fiber cement siding, not the wood grain textured look, but smooth fiber cement siding on accessory buildings, both new and existing, uh and on non-contributing structures in Kenema. And um Ken, you can just, if you guys wanna jump in as I go or you can kind of wait till the end of each topic, I'm happy to go either way.
Well, I, I think that comments on, on each section probably will make it clearer if we just go through it.
Two, allow uh the smooth horizontal boards only. And then shakes, because there's fiber cement like rectangles, you know, pe- big pieces. And so we, we, we want to clarify that this is horizontal boards to replicate wood siding. Um, or shakes or shingles that use straight, straight lines and not the um jagged kind of uh design.
Like the sawtooth?
Yeah, yeah. Um, three, also allow fiber cement when replacing vinyl siding on any structure, even if it's historic. So if we had a historic building, you know, twenty years ago, get vinyl siding and now people want to replace it, allow fiber cement in that case.
It's an upgrade.
Uh, and then four, um fiber cement on historic structures should require board approval. So I would not be able to approve it as staff, if they want to use it, they have to come to you. Um, and your decision would be based on how well the substitute material matches the original wood siding and profile and design. And I think that's where we would get into thickness and the style, like beaded lap, Dutch lap, kind of thing, conversation. And so that implies that you might be willing to allow um fiber cement on historic structures. If you don't want to imply that, because you probably would say no, then I would just suggest we, we scratch, scrap that last number four.
I'm inclined to leave number four in there. It's a decision that we would make on a case-by-case basis. And, and again, that is only in replacing vinyl siding, if I understand it correctly.
Well, even that would come back to us though, right?
Vinyl, what I, what I, what's not maybe totally clear here is that um number three would be allowed at a staff level.
Okay.
And um, and so if you're, if you have wood siding and say it's rotting or something and you want to put new siding on and use fiber cement, um that, that's the case by case that would come to you in number four.
Okay.
Okay, um, God, this thing feels like it's echoing.
It's loud.
I don't know if it's me or, I feel like I'm.
Turn the room volume down.
Anyway, um. Anyway, um, I was wondering if they're just repairing, replacing, you know, certain areas. How does it compare, I have not had exposure, you know, to that. How does it compare to wood? So if, I mean, when you're replacing the whole house, it's one thing, because you have nothing to compare it with. But if you're repairing and only, you know, replacing a certain section of it, how does it compare?
I really doubt that it would work.
I don't, that's, that's where my um question is, is how, how, is it really compatible? Um, or can you tell that this has been replaced and this is original? That would be my um question.
I don't know of a fiber cement product that attempts to precisely replicate the, the natural wood product. And in fact, I think that where dimensions are involved, the new products are metric.
Ooh.
So it'd be really hard to make a match. But I just, I can't imagine anyone actually wanting to do that.
Yeah.
Well, and it would come before us anyway, so we would.
Yeah.
Have that say, that, that would be my concern.
Yeah, I, I can't imagine somebody patching in.
Well, like along, sometimes like the siding along the, the bottom, you know, where it's been exposed, you know, first flash and stuff like that. Um, sometimes, like we did that when we did the Inserth House Cottage, you know, the bottom, along the bottom, we did, you know, we replaced instead of with actual, you know, um siding, but.
If you were unable to actually match the original wood, then you'd have to do it as a reveal of some sort.
Yeah.
I think.
Well, we had stuff milled, but I mean, that was a way back, so, all right. That would, you know, but I guess we would cross that bridge and address that when it comes before us. But you might, you know, if they, if somebody does apply and has that question, you might, you know.
You can tell them what a torturous process it is to come in here and get.
Yeah, we would encourage you repair or using wood.
Yeah, it's a lot easier to, to go the direct route and use.
Anyway, that's, that would be my only concern.
So is there anything less than all sides of designated historic structure still require approval or are we, or are they go to staff?
Which one?
Number four, because you, you're talking about like patching or repairing.
Yeah.
But number four states on all sides of designated historic will come to.
Maybe the better word is any, so that just saying.
So any, instead of all.
If you're proposing to use fiber cement on any side of a historic.
Yeah, so that might be a good way to address that.
And yeah, like I said, that this isn't the actual, this isn't the exact language that would be used in the policies, but I just want to clear this with you first.
And like, um, he said that, or Ken said, you know, I can't see that somebody would replace it with something that was different dimensions. But, but you need to, I think we need to address that to make sure.
Okay, so any um, any concerns with this as written?
Nope, not for me. Change all too many.
We have a question.
Um, can, can you come up and, and speak so the camera can?
You're on camera.
Thank you.
My name is Trent Karimah, I'm an architect emeritus. And we used to have a house in Eagle Creek that was built in nineteen twenty-six and behind that was an old house that was built probably in the eighteen eighties or so. And I redid the siding on that and it was old channel slugs, channel siding. What I did there, because I want, the, the sun was rotted, is I salvaged the good pieces, put a wainscote around it and then, then kept the upper part, so there's, there's different ways of doing it.
Right, right.
Right. And, and so, and on that, on the uh cement boards siding, we usually call it um bevel siding, although it's not bevel, but it's.
Or drop lap.
Yeah. And uh, when you talk about dimension, it's how they install it, on how much is exposed. So, and it's, it's a, a material you have to be careful with, because since a cement board, when you plow a nail through it, it breaks out the backside and if you get water through it, it creates rot in the back. So they've come up with some new systems of installing it uh to prevent that and those need to be taken into account too, but anyway.
Okay.
Interesting.
Today, of course, you would have to bring your question about wainscoting the bottom of an eighteen eighty structure to us for approval before you would do that.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to porches and decks. Uh, similar uh survey results, um where we heard about half, half of people said allow composite materials on porches and decks um all the time, whenever, uh in any situation. Forty-two percent said, um only in some situations, you know, for something that's not visible from the street, for example. Uh, and then two people or eleven percent said, never allow composite deck materials. We also, you know, we discussed this at the board level and kind of talked about not, not uh allowing it on the front, but maybe behind um in a place that's less visible. Uh, so my recommendation is to allow composite decking on side or rear decks or rear porches, including the railings, stairs and deck boards. Um, also detached deck structures that are behind or to the side of a house would, uh could do that as well. So uh for a corner, um, when I say side, I mean interior side and not corner side. Um, so it wouldn't be along the street, um unless it's behind the house. Um, but we can kind of talk about whether that's okay or not. Um, second recommendation, the composite material color should match the house. That's usually what we say, what we say now for any um porches or decking is that it needs to be painted. And so, you know, most people will, you know, maybe paint, paint the wood white um in many cases, but it could also be a different color that matches the paint scheme of the house. Um, there are, the, the pro, the composite products do come in um like a white color. Uh, and then there are various shapes of wood and then there are different tints. So the color issue is an interesting one, um it would limit, uh requiring the color to match would, would be a little bit limiting for folks and they wouldn't even be able to use the, the wood grain look, for example. Number three, um use of composite decking material on front porches or corner sides of the property, property would require board approval. Number four, for railings, uh require vertical ballisters rather than any horizontal type of design um with a top and a bottom rail with the ballister attachment between the rails and not um attached from the outside. Uh, aluminum railings, um, a, a lot of the products come with, you can get the, everything composite or you can get the composite decking with aluminum railings. Um, and so this would uh require, or this would not allow aluminum railings at a staff level. Um, number five, clarify that no pressure treated wood may be visible. Um, so this is also, this policy would apply to any porches and decks, not just composite. Um, so if someone's building a wood deck, we want to, I, I, I want the policies as staff, I would like to have that in the policies so that's really clear to people. Um, because that, that, that's what I'm saying to people constantly is no pressure treated wood, no pressure treated wood. Um, wrap it uh or, you know, use it underneath where it's not visible. Number six, clarify that wood decks and porches uh must be painted to match the house, paint stain is also acceptable. That's a lot, any thoughts?
Number five, it's to clarify that no pressure wood may be visible. I just, instead of may.
Shall.
Shall not be visible or something, you know.
Yep, we can do that.
The may kind of leaves it in limbo.
When you talk about aluminum railings in the fourth paragraph, you were speaking of a specific product application. But is this a a general statement about metal railings as well? You get an anodized aluminum railing, it's not gonna look that much different from a steel railing until you put your hands on it.
Yeah, um, we might need some. So you're saying, you know, if somebody has a, a deck and they want, and they have a steel railing or a, on the front porch.
Would a, would a steel railing pass the test? You're, you're gonna ban aluminum outright, I'm not opposed to that.
So I'm thinking of um if somebody's doing co- like concrete stairs or something on the back of a structure with a metal handrail, um, that typically meets the Secretary of Interior standards. Um, and that's covered under, I think it's HRV policy number eight, which allows alterations that meet the Secretary of Interior standards. So I wouldn't want this to preclude that.
I see.
And, and I can work on wordsmithing it to achieve that.
Yeah, and in that application, they probably wouldn't be using aluminum.
Right.
For structural reasons, so.
Right.
Okay, okay, I understand, I'll come, I can buy that.
And then you're saying the color should match, because sometimes they just like stain it. So down in your last, it says paint stain is also acceptable, would be the same. Can you, I don't know, composite material, can you stain that or does it have to be, it has to be painted?
No, you don't, typically you don't, it comes in different colors.
Colors, right, 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 okay.
So I don't think it's meant to be painted or stained and so the number six applies to wood. Decks and porches need to ma- match the house um with paint or paint stain. Um, and then number two is for the composite.
Oh, okay. Is that like hardy plank, is that, is that a type of? I'm just not familiar.
Hardy plank is the siding.
Have you heard of Trex?
Trex, okay, so it's, okay, okay.
Did we specify a difference between composite decking and like vinyl decking?
Uh, we can. Um, I, I, I think this conversation, this whole conversation, we were uh me, I think we, we were talking about the composite and not the fully plastic.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Certainly the railing, I've seen some pretty terrible vinyl railing stuff, seeing as, okay, it's glossy plastic. We don't, I don't think we want to include that in.
Should we include that as the vinyl um decking and stuff shall not be.
Yeah.
Allowed, you know, similar to the aluminum railings.
Yeah, we can uh clarify that vinyl or, or fully plastic materials aren't, aren't included in this.
Yeah. And then that way it leaves no question.
Yeah, that's a good point, thanks. Any other concerns with this one?
Not me.
No.
Okay.
All right, moving on to windows. Uh, so we um we heard, we asked about three different types of windows, fiberglass clad wood, all fiberglass and wood plastic blend. Fiberglass clad wood, the vast majority of people said, um allow this in some or all cases. Um, but for the all fiberglass and the wood plastic blend windows, um it was more evenly split between allow it or don't ever allow it. So, um, oh, and then also uh people who were supportive of the alternative materials in general just said, it's acceptable if it matches um the look of the original wood window. Uh, and so my recommendation um is to, of course, keep our policy language that encourages window repair over replacement. Uh, allow non-vineal alternative window materials, so all three of those fiberglass blend or fiberglass clad on accessory structures, um new or existing uh and on non-contributing, non-contributing structures in Kenema. And number three, uh if the structure was originally built with aluminum or vinyl windows, so for example, like a seventies era apartment building in Kenema, um then allow vinyl replacements.
It would be non-contributing anyway.
It, it would, um but, but we would be allowing vinyl in that case. In addition to, of course, fiberglass, you know, or the other alternatives. Uh, number four, allow wood, aluminum clad wood and fiberglass clad wood windows on designated historic structures if they match the original window design. Uh, a different window type may be used, uh so a lot of times you can use a, a casement in place of a double hung, uh double hung or a single hung in place of a double hung, a casement in place of a picture window, as long as the appearance is the same. Um, and I'm including the mountains, uh the grids specifically because if it's a six over one window, for example, like in the, in the picture that's shown, we want to match that. And then it's the owner's responsibility to document the design of the original windows. Number five, never allow interior window grids. Uh, number six, add, uh add language encouraging replacement windows to match dimensions of the original windows for styles, rails and sill depth. And so we would include in the policy some sort of diagram like this one um and, and just have some educational language about trying to match as close as possible um these dimensions, knowing that um it's impossible to exactly match the original wood window unless you get a fully custom build, most of the time. Uh, and so the products that are out there, like the fiberglass clad or aluminum clad wood windows that are out there, even the wood windows that are out there, don't exactly match historic, you know, design. Um, but we, we do allow, you know, wood windows now, um even if the exact design doesn't match, right? So, so it's really difficult to get into um exact, matching the precise measurements and it's also difficult to enforce. And so uh we would just instead add this kind of educational language encouraging people and sharing information um so that folks can go out and try their best to match those dimensions. Um, and then we would be able to approve or, or, you know, they would be able to replace those windows without board approval. So this, this is expanding the policy quite a bit uh from, from what it is currently. So I'm kind of looking for your direction on this one.
Do you think we should address Fibrex?
That is the wood plastic blend.
Yes.
I, this, you know, the additional testimony that you attached, it says Brett Kemp Kemp's windows, is this his information that he submitted? Or, I mean, that Francesca submitted?
Yes.
This isn't in her words?
I think it is her translation of her conversation with Kemp.
Okay, because this was, this was interesting and I know wood nowadays is not.
Right.
Like wood of old. Um, so this was interesting, but I wasn't sure. I thought it was him until I saw her name down below. So this is her interpretation and not his actual.
I, that's my understanding, is that she had a, she talked with him and then she took notes and then typed them up for us.
Okay. Because it was, it was, you know. Very salient, okay.
So I see what the survey said about the uh Fibrex, but I don't see it addressed in the staff recommendations, it's just ignored.
So the number two, the non-vineal alternative window materials.
Okay.
Are all three of those, so the Fibrex, the fiberglass and fiberglass clad wood.
Okay. Okay.
But they would all.
If you can make it clear to anyone over the counter, as clear as you just made it, then I'm happy with it.
Right, yeah, yeah, we'd have to work on the language.
And so, these recommendations, to me, does this mean that it'll be approved at the staff level? Or does it come to the board?
This all would be approved at the staff level, so if somebody could replace their original wood windows with wood, aluminum clad wood or fiberglass clad wood. So the current policy says window repair is encouraged. Um, if you have to replace your windows, um, you must use wood and, and it has to be in kind. It says in kind, um, materials. Um, and so that's a little vague as far as design goes. Um, but it, it does only allow, well, if it's a wood window, you have to replace with wood. If it's a, if the prob, if there's a problem with the current policy, if it's a, a vinyl window, you have to replace with vinyl. If it's an aluminum window, you have to replace with aluminum, cause this policy says in kind materials. Um, so we wanna kind of clear, clean that up and add clarity. But what this would allow is I'm replacing my wood windows with fiberglass clad wood at a staff level.
Okay.
I'm happy with that.
As long as, yeah.
Well, and some, some things we have talked about is maybe specifying, um, kind of a level of quality by giving some product examples, like the Milgard, um, is it Milgard Essence or Marvin Integrity? And kind of putting a floor on the quality. You know, we can do that. I, I, it, it, we, it does get a little tricky when we start talking about brand names and stuff in a policy, so that's why I haven't avoided it, but we could go there if you wanna go there.
Well, and I noticed on several of the comments, you know, um, with the windows, that as far as the, um, energy efficiency, you know. But, so on national register buildings, that wouldn't be allowed or?
And we can specify that not on national register properties.
Cause I would think that that would affect its, you know.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's a good point. And I think as a, ge- generally, I think staff, uh, if, if any, if any alterations to a national register listed property are, um, requested, we typically put, take it to the board no matter what.
Oh, okay.
Um, that's just, it's not written in any policy, but that's in practice what we do. Um, but I think it's helpful to clarify just in case somebody doesn't know and then they don't feel like they have the permission to go and do this.
So it's not actually for national register listed properties that they don't, it doesn't? Oh, no, no, yeah. They should come.
Yeah.
Okay, but you said it's not, um, in the, um?
Well, you know, if there's a like for like replacement of windows in a national register property, that might not have to come to the board. But generally, if they're doing anything that's different from exactly what they have now,
Replacement.
Then we take it to the board.
Are we good now? Sorry. We are.
Okay.
Solar.
Solar. Uh, so what we heard is, um, we, we actually heard a lot of strong opinions to, that solar should be allowed outright with no restrictions on historic properties. Uh, and then we heard an equal number of people say, yes, um, allow it, but only in some cases. You know, not on the front of a building, not in this prominent location. Um, and then we had two people or eleven percent say never allow it. On this historic structure, I think one of those said it's okay if it's, if it's detached. Uh, so my recommendation is to, um, allow solar, um, number one, location on secondary facades and on accessory structures. Uh, look, the pan, if they're panels, they need to be low profile, um, installed flat, uh, that don't alter the slope of the roof. Um, they need to be compatible in color, so you know, dark gray roof or black roof with black panels. You know, if you have a really light color roof, um, then that might, that would have to come to the board. Flat roof structures, and these are the policies, these are straight from that, um, document that we reviewed previously, uh, from, I think it might have been the National Trust that had recommended solar policies. So, um, the flat roof structure, structures set back from the edge to minimize visibility, uh, pitch and elevation adjusted to reduce visibility from the right of way. Uh, solar shingles, uh, I think this is, I think, I, I heard some hesitation, um, from folks about solar shingles cause they're new and we don't really know what they look like, um, yet. And so, um, the most comfortable we could get was allowing them on the secondary facades if they match the roof color, um, but nothing more than that. Um, anything more than that would have to come to the board. Um, and then freestanding arrays, um, in locations that minimize visibility from the public right of way or are screened from the right of way with fencing or vegetation. So the, the application that came before you a few months ago for the panels, uh, facing the street and visible from the right of way in the backyard, because it was a corner lot, um, that would still come to the board under this policy.
Okay.
But this would allow some people to not have to come to the board.
I'm not, I guess, again, not familiar with the shingles. I guess I should have looked on. Do they look like shingles?
They do.
They do?
They look really good. I don't think they're very common yet, though. They're very, like, very, very new.
Right.
Huh. It's kinda cool if they, you know, if they don't stick out, but.
Maybe just a little shinier than composite roofing.
They look more like slate tiles or something than like asphalt shingles.
Oh, okay. I love the one, um, that said that, I will, never mind, I can't find it, but it's something about, you know, taking care of the earth, cause your design in your house isn't gonna be worth it if it hurts. There's something to that effect.
True enough.
Yep. Oh, here, preserving the planet is num- uh, number one of importance because we can't preserve our houses if we don't have a planet. Yeah.
Any concerns with these?
I have none.
Okay. Fences and walls are favorite. We didn't hear from anybody regarding height, so I recommend to keep that the way it is. As far as three and a half in the front, this quarter side, and then six feet in the back or the interior side. Um, we heard, we did hear from McLaughlin, from some folks that it, we should apply the fence policy throughout McLaughlin, not just for designated structures. That is, you know, something that we can talk about in the future, but this process is not a code change. Um, that would require, uh, an actual code change to chapter seventeen forty. So, um, it's not really within the scope of our project, but it's something to keep in mind for any future code changes. Uh, so we had some images of fences, fence types, and we asked folks, um, do you think this should be permitted outright in the front yard, in the rear yard, on commercial properties? Or never, and then kind of circle which ones, you can circle more than one, right? If you think it's appropriate in all cases. Uh, so here are the results. And I'm just gonna go, we can go back and look at those if we need to, but I'm just gonna go into the recommendation. Um, so we would add the definitions of each of those fence types, um, and photo examples, um, to our policy as a nice guide for, uh, for property owners. Um, we would add a narrative and purpose statement that emphasizes open designs in the front yard, and I think at one point you saw a draft paragraph of that. Um, and I'm just gonna use, I think, what you saw before, um, that kind of talks about why we have a policy on fences to begin with, um, and generally what we're looking for as far as compatibility goes. Um, so we would add the following, the staff recommendations to add the following to the front yard list. This would be for front yards and corner side yards. Um, adding basalt stone, I think right now it just says combinations of iron and masonry. Um, so we just wanna be super clear to people, basalt stone is absolutely permitted outright. Um, cast in place concrete. Split rail fences for non-contributing properties in Kanima only. Uh, and the split rail, I feel like it's the fourth one down. Um, quite a few people said front yard or rear yard, it would be okay. But we heard, we, we did have some comments, some separate comments from the survey question that said that split rail is not appropriate. And so, uh, the recommendation is just only for non-contributing properties in Kanima. Um, goat fence for non-contributing properties in Kanima, that's that welded wire that's framed by wood. Uh, so the split rail and goat fence are interesting because they are open designs. You know, you can see through them, and so in a front yard, they, they would, um, accomplish the same thing, uh, kind of that a picket fence accomplishes, but, um, because of the design of them, I think we're, we, we heard that it's really not as, as compatible. And so, we, people weren't comfortable with allowing those on historic, um, for designated or contributing structures. Uh, solid wood board, so unspaced picket, um, when it does not obscure the view of the home. So for example, if the house is built a little bit higher on the lot and the fence is around the perimeter, um, or when used on a non-contributing property in Kanima only. So this would require the property owner to kind of demonstrate to staff that the three and a half foot or, um, shorter fence would not, um, obscure the view of the home. Um, right now, we only allow picket fences, and this would allow wood without spacing between the pickets. Adding steel or aluminum rail fences, uh, for commercial properties or for non, non-residential. So that would be churches, schools, um, and commercial properties. So number.
You say non-single family, so for duplex, triplex?
We can, um, that's a good point. Uh, maybe it should be non-residential.
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay, number three, uh, add the following to, uh, the list for fences and walls that are acceptable in the rear or side yard. Wood lattice, um, poured concrete, split rail, recycled concrete, goat fence, non-basalt stone and gabion wall. And then add the following to the not acceptable list, um, just to be super clear. Uh, well, chain link is already on there, but chain link hedge slats and then chicken wire.
Oh, I know what you mean, but the hedges, yeah, with the, okay, gotcha. Cause chain link is already on there, right?
Right. Any comments about these?
Curious about the discussion that got gabion wall put on the list.
Yeah.
In the backyard. Well, I think, um, there wasn't any, there wasn't a whole lot of discussion on it, but based on the, um, survey results, uh, it seemed like it was supported as a rear yard or commercial property. I mean, there were a handful of people that said never. So, you know, the, the current policy doesn't address gabion walls at all.
So split rail fences are allowed in McLaughlin neighborhood?
They are not, um, I think right now, split rail is in the never, on the never allowed list.
Okay. So this is just saying that it would just be for non-contributing in Kanima?
In the front, and then it would be allowed in anybody's backyard.
Huh. I would think it would detract.
That's what I was gonna say, is that it, to me, absent of any evidence, historic evidence of it in Kanima, it creates a false sense of history, sort of, in that it's, is a rustic type that you would see in certain types of
But not in the town.
Historic districts that have more of agricultural background or something maybe, but not so much in Kanima.
Yes, I.
Even though there is one down there, fairly recent construction, lasted three or four years.
Well.
On and on.
But that doesn't make it right.
Yeah, it's just, yeah, I mean, not approved. I am not considering that, but for.
Sure.
We, we discussed this quite a bit in the M and A advisory committee meeting last one we had, so we discussed some of these things. And I think one thing that I'm a little lost on here is there, is there a, a difference between a retaining wall and a fence? Because there are retaining walls around, and how is, how is that looked upon? As far as this fence, I mean, is the fence start above the retaining wall?
Oh, so in situations where you have a retaining wall and then a fence on top of it?
So retaining wall has a purpose of holding back a bank.
Yeah, so, so this policy is meant to include, um, fences and retaining walls and landscape walls.
So it probably needs to be clarified that retaining walls, what they are. And the other thing that we talked about a lot was, um, there are no, as far as I know, there aren't permit requirements for fences.
That's correct.
Unless it's over six feet, is that right?
Right.
And so, how are you gonna control it? Yeah, how you gonna? So you, there's, there's gotta be a way of controlling that, because it's, it's, it's bad policy to control it after it's built. Because a lot of people are, they're pulling all their savings out to build this fence around the house and suddenly being told they gotta tear it down. That's a real hardship.
Yeah.
So the question's gonna be too, if you, not only, uh, presenting these regulations, how are you gonna get that to the public so they understand it?
Yeah, we, we expect people to, uh, when they own a historic property, um, we, we do send a packet to them that has historic property information and a copy of the policies. Um, so we get, uh, we get the information from the tax assessor every quarter. And if there are sales of properties and it's a new owner, then we send out that packet. Um, and, and we try to do a lot of education, but we hope, we hope that people, you know, people know that they're in the historic overlay that they need to call and check, and a lot of people do. And frankly, a lot of the other policies as well on siding, for example, you don't need to get, necessarily get a permit to replace your siding either. So a lot, a lot of the, that's why we kinda have policies, um, at a staff level. I'm sorry?
And painting your house, you were talking about painting decks.
Right, right, so, um, I mean, you hit the nail on the head, you hit the nail on the head of why, why this is challenging. But, um, I think the best we can do is be very, very clear in our policy what's allowed and what's not allowed so that people can just rep, you know, look it up and then, you know, get, get their fence built or do whatever work they're doing, um, you know, and then we, we don't have a permit process for it.
And when you were talking about windows, just to backtrack, uh, when you talk about replacement windows, um, it's common in the industry that when you talk about replacement ones, you're talking about replacement sashes. And not necessarily the frame.
Right.
So there might be a need to clarify which one you're doing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so when we're talking about fences and walls, we're mainly talking about the finish or the, the surface appearance of it. I understand how those go together. Uh, we're, we're pushing the clock here.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
I'm, th- this is the last thing, so if there are no, is, there's no additional, um, feedback from the board, then, you know, I can go back and craft the language. then, you know, I can go back and craft the language to reflect all these things that you just gave me.
I have, oh, thank you. I guess the only thing I have problem with is the split rail.
Denise handed you one, too?
Oh, I'm sorry, Denise.
Oh, I guess we're not getting it out. Shoot, we're supposed to be.
What we're gonna do is allow these, but don't expect us to come right back in at seven o'clock because we're not gonna be leaving until seven o'clock, so come on forward, Denise.
We were supposed to leave already, so, okay. Please don't leave. Stay.
Anyway, Denise McGriff, Oregon City, and I apologize for being late, but I was at the William Hill Holmes House taking care of some stuff for the Rose Farm Management Committee. But, um, I have been following this and been talking to Kelly, uh, off and on about some ideas and proposals. And what I have a concern about is we had had a request about a year ago from a member of the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association to propose to the HRB that the fence policies be applied equally among all the properties. And Kelly and I have talked about that, and I've communicated back with that person and said, you know, if you feel that strongly about it, you need to come and speak for yourself. And that person did come to the work session in April, and I don't know what the resolution was. But what I get concerned about is, I would agree with Claire, um, split rail fencing is not appropriate, I think, in either of the historic districts, either in Kanema or in McLaughlin because it is not a fence that would have been typically been utilized in this particular area. If you live out in, out in Springwater or you're in Viola, yes, that probably would have been more appropriate on those types of larger properties. But we're talking about inner-city properties, at least in, in Reagan City. And I think that, um, I would like to strongly recommend that you apply fencing unilaterally through the Kanema district. It is a National Register district, obviously Ken lives there, he knows about that. And to have this sort of mishmash of you can do this if you're non-contributing or you're not, um, you know, basically, you've got a district that is trying to be cohesive and be looked at as a whole. And I think everybody should have the same, same policy. Uh, I had sent Kelly some comments about stuff that I thought would be acceptable in the rear yard, and I'll have to tell you that everything from B down, to me, is not acceptable in the rear yard. Uh, I agree, chicken wire and chain link hedges or slats or any of that. And I don't know where you're going with the, um, people that buy the plastic fencing. That, to me, probably is even a little more heinous than some of the other things. But I, I'd like to see fencing proposed that whether you're a contributing structure or a non-contributing structure would look equally good on either property. And, you know, goat fencing, I, I don't think it belongs in a historic district. Kelly did ask me to go look at a property that has a solid wood fence, which is unspaced picket. And I took a long and deep breath and I said, well, you know, historically, it probably wouldn't have been there, but it does look okay. And, you know, I would grit my teeth and I told her that it'd probably be all right. But I don't particularly want to see that continue in other parts of the McLaughlin, this house is in the McLaughlin District, in other parts of the McLaughlin District, because it, it really is not, it's the exception, it's not the rule. So that's really all I have to say, and I will continue to communicate through, you know, with Kelly about some suggestions. I've done extensive research on fencing when I was here at the city, and I'm telling you, I've got more stuff at home in my archives than I even want to talk about. And I've been going through and trying to find some of that, but books are out there.
Mike, this is, oh, I'm a Oregon City resident, and I was just trying to watch out for things that I was confused by because they're likely to be points of concern or contention later on. First, on the porches and deck color, the recommendation said to match the house color. Does that mean the house body color or the house trim color or either? Or do you care? But i- if you care, I, I think that needs to be spelled out. On solar, I was a bit concerned because it talks about in point number four, I think, no, two, it said to match the roof slope, but then there are, there were different requirements for flat roof. And I'm, my question was, does that mean you could have a angled panel on a flat roof as long as you did those couple of visibility things that it talked about? So I don't know if that needs to be cleared up or not. Um, and the third thing, on the rear yard list that's right here, do you need to specify that those can't be used if the rear yard faces on another street?
Like on a corner?
Corner. Well, not a, a corner or, or a lot that goes, that goes all the way through from street to street. Because I think the intention is that it's not visible from the street. But if, if there's a street back there also, it would be from that street, so, anyway. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have the, um, yeah, direction for, for staff. We, we have the survey regarding, uh, what, what people thought was acceptable or not acceptable. And, uh, I think that's the best and broadest input from the public that we have. And your recommendations are based on those numbers. And I'm personally satisfied to stick with that. Regarding the solar panel question, I, I do understand the issue. And, and maybe you could, you could come up with some wording to clarify that. I think that's a good point. And regarding the color on the composite decking, I was, I was assuming the whole time you were talking that we were talking about matching a color, not necessarily the dominant color. And, and maybe that, a couple of more words added to that could take care of that. So go ahead, Grant.
Uh, I was just going to say that I think good comments, there are all, a few minor tweaks to the solar windows, uh, decking, all that, but I think really close. I, I feel like we maybe need to revisit the fencing. I think that the survey on the fencing provides good input, but not necessarily well-educated input, uh, in all cases about, you know, particularly the split rail issue and things, and
And even the goat.
I tend to agree with most of what Denise said about, um, you know, and what if you have a contributing structure and a non-contributing structure that are adjacent, and the owner of the non-contributing structure puts up the fence between the two? Do they get to apply their rules or the contrib-, you know, and
Yeah.
I, I think that maybe we do need to just create guidelines that apply to the whole neighborhood as a co- cohesive historic district for the fencing in Kanema, uh, as well. So maybe we need to have
Especially when it comes to Kanema.
circle back to this on another session or something, I don't know.
Okay. Well, I will, um, I'll take a stab at, um, changing C and D to no, uh, or removing C and D essentially. And, uh, it sounds like removing split rail from number three as well is your direction, or no?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy removing it, I, I don't see any need for it.
I don't, no.
I don't think-
And even the goat, goat fence, even on, you know, in three.
On three?
Yeah.
Yeah. Or the, I don't know, for Kanema, I have a hard time seeing the gabion wall.
Gabion, I know, that one just-
With the recycled concrete, really, I mean, as
They can make-
imitation basalt wall, maybe, I don't know, but.
But that's in the rear yard, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd almost, um, I think we're pretty much in agreement with what our comments were for the other, um, uh, staff recommendations on the different topics. But I, the fence and wall, I think it almost deserves a little bit more, um, scrutiny. And I don't know if that kind of throws a monkey wrench into the-
Well, we have the schedule here.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I can, um, I'm happy to tr- still take, write up the policy um, with what we've agreed on already, I think, and then kind of, we can talk about it at the next meeting. Because I think, um, the hearing to adopt the rest of these, it sounds like we're in most of, mostly agreement for everything else. So we can
Okay.
use next meeting if you would like
The work session to kind of-
continue the conversation on fences.
Okay. I just think we need to look at it a little bit more.
Yeah.
To kind of massage it.
And we're, we're originally hoping to have the public hearing at our May meeting. So if we're working on it in a work session prior to that meeting, we're probably not going to have it then.
Well, I can still draft up, uh, um, I can still put together a draft policy to start with, and then it can be revised, um,
Okay.
during the hearing. I mean, it, th- this isn't a, it's not a quasi-judicial kind of process. Um, so I don't think we need to really worry about the procedure as much.
Notice and everything, okay, that works then. We're gonna break now, and we will be back at seven fifteen. For those of you who weren't here at the, at the time,
Ran long.
Our work session ran long for reasons beyond our control.
Okay.
Thank you.